All right, hello everybody. It's 5:30 so we're gonna get the meeting rolling or presentation. I guess it is a meeting of the council study session. I don't know about the school board. Thank you for attending this important meeting. We're glad you're here. Obviously, we've asked this meeting, asked to have this meeting so that Lori from Triangle Two Solutions can present the findings from the survey work that was recently completed within our community. We hope that you'll find the information useful and interesting as we move into the next phase of the project development for the recreation and childhood education center. I think I missed Lori in my back too. One of the things that I think Lori will talk about in detail is understanding our community is an important thing and seeing the results of what she has, the data she's gathered compared to what we did with the initial community survey which was done by OneMasca. I think you'll see some correlations there, but she'll get into that in a little bit more detail. But I think what we're trying to do is refine the scope of work that we have before us because obviously without the county participation, the project has changed a little bit. And so we want to make sure that if we're investing the dollars that we have available to us for the taxpayers that we're doing it wisely and we're doing it in a way that the project can be self-sufficient. And so that's the idea. We'll get into the next steps as we go through the project itself with the presentation. But if you have questions, please at any time speak up. Lori will be more than happy to entertain those questions, answer, or you can defer them to any of the council members or any other member here. So thank you for being here, Lori.
Okay. Well, my name is Lori Swan, as Michael said, and I appreciate you having me and hiring me, and I've enjoyed working with your community. I started out my career with the YMCA and spent 17 years working with the YMCA's in middle Tennessee. When I left, I was the chief operating officer, and I did a lot of work with new communities in our association. I worked a lot with market research and decided in 2000, I started a company and decided that I would really focus on the research side of it. I have an MBA with my emphasis in statistics from Vanderbilt, and I just love numbers and data, and I love the YMCA, so it's been a good thing. So I've had, been a part of doing this with nonprofit organizations, social sector, but 75% of my clients are YMCA's because that's where my experience is and a lot of my heart. The past seven, eight years, I don't think, I very seldom have a client that is one client. Everything I have now is partnership city and county and hospitals and universities and churches and YMCA's that are working together to bring things to the community. So as you can imagine, that makes it a little bit more complicated on the beginning, but I think it makes the outcome a lot more of a robust and just, you know, community-integrated project that you'll end up with. I live in Nashville, so you may hear a little southern accent there. I have four kids and they're, three of them are grown and one thinks he is, he's 16, but I also have a little dog, Nellie, and that's what really, that's why I go home every weekend is to see my puppies. Travel a lot and just mainly do this with YMCA. So you won't distract me if you have a question or if you don't understand something I said, raise your hand and I'll be glad to go into it a little bit more detail. So I think as far as the purpose, this is too little for you to read on the screen, but I like to have all of the pieces in the same report because as the document becomes public, I don't want the end of the story to be told without the beginning of the story. And so the beginning of the story was, your group came to me and said, "We need to find out some things," and mainly the feasibility of an early childhood center and a recreation facility, community recreation facility for this community, what would it look like? Not just to build it, but it needs to be able to be sustainable. And we, at the end, you know, we wanted to know how many members, how much, what will participation be and what will they, what will they pay? And, you know, so we'll be looking at that, and you'll see lots of numbers toward the end. Methodology, and I don't know how many of you, you know, remember maybe your stats class or kind of that, you'll see the polling that happened. We're hearing a lot about polling right now, aren't we? But this isn't polling, this is statistical analysis. And so we have some sample size based on the size of your test community that we needed to interview. And the study that you did earlier, you get good data from those kinds of things too, but they're not necessarily random. And so what we want to do, and if you think about anything that happened, we all hear from our friends, right? We all are around people that we, that we know, and they tell us what they think, and so we get either, you know, kind of get, "Oh yeah, that's what I think too." But when we look at a population the size of yours and we say, "We need 400, 600 interviews," one of the main things we need from a statistical standpoint is for those interviews to be random. And so there's no such thing as just complete randomness because some people are more likely to answer the phone, or some people are more likely to participate in a survey, but we do the best that we can to get a good cross-segment of your population. And we do that by looking at currently, the first thing we did was look at currently, where YMCA members coming from. And so this circle here represents 80% of where the current members are coming from. We then talk with, with the committee, we talked, and we say, you know, where do we think members might come from? And so we came up then with a study area that we wanted to study. And we really, we didn't know this at the time, but when I went back at the end and plotted everybody and did it, we ended up studying an area that's about a 30-minute drive time around the potential site for the new, for the new facility. And we, you know, I look at things like population density because in the end, again, part of that randomness is we want to make sure we get a good cross-population of the people in the study area. And as you know, you don't have a hugely dense population in this area, so it's a little bit more spread out, but we were still able to get, get some, some good information there. The square here is your county, and so we did survey outside the county in the areas where you see the yellow. Now, this one is a little bit taking you to the end of the story, but I want you to have this in your mind as we're going along. You remember when we saw where our current members were, and you know you can't use a laser pointer on a television screen, but I just keep trying it every time because I'm used to using this, is that we, we saw that most of our members now are coming from this area right here, pretty close in, but what we saw in the survey, when we saw where people would be most interested, we saw a lot more spread out here, and we saw some pretty significant interest up in this, the northwest corridor of the study area that we had. So we'll look at that as we go along and talk about maybe why that is. I think some of the services that we're talking about are current, are not currently offered here. I think you probably have a lot of commute traffic pattern coming in, and you've got, you know, direct route there. But it was good news for the study area to say that we would be drawing people from a larger area than just right in hospitals. We completed 712 phone interviews for those people completed. You know, we would have dialed a lot more than that, although my interviewers talked about how nice people were here and how willing they were to take the survey, and so we didn't dial as many as we thought we might. Of those, 453 were non-members, 137 are current members, and 122 were former members. So that gives us a 95% confidence rate, so that just means if we did the study 100 times, we would expect the results to be exactly the same 95 of the 100 times, and then all of our errors, all of our answers are correct with an error ratio of plus or minus 4%. We, we wanted things to be random, but we also didn't want to over-survey any certain population. And sometimes we'll over-survey seniors if we're not careful because they're more likely to be home, they're more likely to take the survey. So what we do, just so you'll know, is we kind of make a bucket of those, if you can think about that in our computer. As soon as that number of seniors that represents what would be a good population is reached, then those are disqualified. So we don't, we make sure we got a good cross-sampling. So this is the ages, all the blues are the ages that we have there. Now, on the gender side, we always, unless we do that same kind of thing, we end up with more women than men. It's not a problem in a survey like this because women are a part of the decision-making process in a big way when it comes to health and fitness and childcare. But you know why, right? Why do women, we get more women? Are anybody in the house with guys? Do they ever answer the phone?
My wife will answer.
Yes, right, right. See, that's right. So then I wanted you to see what we ended up with as a study area, and we ended up with a population currently of 33,527 and households of right under 12,000. As you probably know, but it's certainly worth noting for something, your population is expected to grow in the next five years. That's not true of everywhere in our country right now. And so a lot of the places that I'm helping communities figure out what to do with health, recreation, and childcare, we're looking at populations that are either staying the same or getting smaller and getting smaller and getting older. So you don't have that problem, and that's a good one not to have. Your median age is gonna go up a little bit, and you're gonna have fewer households with preschoolers in them in five years than you do now, so we'll talk about that when we talk about the childcare study. We interviewed 60%, 63% of the houses we interviewed had children in them. That was higher than normal primarily because we oversampled, we were looking for people that, so we could get a good sample on the childcare side. Okay, so let's talk about what I found instead of who I talked to, because that's what you probably came to find out. One of the first questions we just asked was like, "What is your perception of, of the YMCA?" And we had, half the people had a positive perception, 49.6%. 41.5% had a neutral perception. It wasn't either good nor bad, they just, they either don't know a lot about it or they say it's there, I'm just not sure exactly what it, what I feel about it. And 9% had a negative perception. I don't, I want, I don't like to say I've never seen, but I can't remember seeing such as low negative perception, and I could go back and check, and I'm sure there's been someone somewhere in 16 years, but you have a very, you know, low of negative. You also very, have a very high of a neutral. So, you know, as you do things through your communications and your marketing, you've got a great opportunity to teach people what you'll be about. The positive factors, what people really know about the YMCA, they're very positive about the staff, about the childcare, childcare programs, and they also just say a lot of times, "It's just, it's good, it's about our community, it's good for our community." The negative factors primarily were all about your current facility.
Excuse me, you mean the building itself?
Yes, yeah. We warm people up too, by talking to them about exercising, what are you currently doing for your health? And we had 41.1% of our respondents reported that they exercised three or more times each week on average, and I told the group last week, I think this is one of those where we all probably round up a little bit in our minds about how much we exercise, we round down on our calories and our age, but, but what we're asking this for though is to find out, is it important to people that they exercise? Because that tells us a lot about the success of health and fitness programs in a community, whether you're gonna need more education programs, or you're, you have people that are ready to do it, they know that they should do it, but they just need different options for doing it. So that's a pretty high percentage, you know, 41.3. So I think that's a good indicator later on when you start to see some of the strong demand that we see. I meant to exercise three times last week, so I would probably give myself that one too. We asked them what they did to exercise, and in this, a couple of the slides, I divided the results into under 60 and over 60 because we had some pretty wide variances here, but cardio, running, walking, cycling, all of those came up pretty high in both, in both Where do they exercise? Right now, most people exercise at home or from home. They, we had 6.7% that are current Y members, pretty much matches our market penetration that we looked at on some of those first slides. And then we had others, and the others that we saw were things like mall walking, golf, gardening, they did it at work. We had one other provider mentioned, and it was mentioned, that provider was only mentioned four times out of all the, out of all the responses. So as you can see, from 70% of the people exercising at or from home, there's a lot of need in the community for another facility. And I did say, I don't think I've seen mall walking come up as many times as it has. He must have some pretty cool, pretty cool mall walking going on. If people had a child and the age and they showed, and they told us they had some interest, we carried them through a separate section of the survey which was all about the early childhood learning center. And this one, so we had 71 of our respondents who, who went on through this part of it. And of the people that did that, we asked them which programs they'd be most interested in. The largest one was the four-year-old preschool, but we had good, really in all of these, so we had 43% for the toddlers and three-year-olds, 34% for infants and mobile infants, and 20%, so they weren't sure. And people could say more than one thing here because they could have different ages of, of kids. So wide variety of programs. Now, with what I said earlier, we know that our, our kids are gonna get older, so it could be that if you're looking at what your programs actually are in five years, I would suspect you're gonna have a lot smaller than 34% of people being interested in the infants and mobile infants, and more is gonna continue to get older. Just good things to know when you're thinking about facilities, so you can build spaces that can be easily transitioned, you know, from an infant space to a preschool space. We asked them if they would need care full-time or part-time in the right-hand corner, you know, pretty big split, half and half, full-time and part-time. Makes it a lot more complicated to operate a child center, child development center, but you're doing a lot of that now, but there definitely is need for it in the community. This is something we're seeing across the nation for lots of reasons. One reason is the, we still have as many or more two-parent working, but we also have a lot of people working from home. You know, I, when I'm not traveling, I work from home, but I can't imagine doing it with an infant, everything that I do, right? So I'd probably need part-time childcare. And in the lower, the bars, the blue bars at the bottom, we said, "What matters to you most when you choose a childcare center?" I see this all the time, location doesn't matter. Now, I'm sure we could get in a location that you're too far out, but if your child's gonna be well taken care of and it's a program that, that you can afford, and has the things that you want, location doesn't really matter. What does matter is staff, price matters, I mean, we have to be able to afford it, and then curriculum, facility, and staff certifications. Tell you a little bit more about curriculum. So when, when the curriculum, we ask people what matters. Now, across the country now, you probably hear the word STEM, you all got science and technology and all the things about math and how important that is and child development, and a lot of preschools are touting that, and it's not, and it is a good thing, right? But what we found in your community is still the number, the biggest things people want were reading and school readiness. So when we're marketing our programs, we can have all of these things, we just want to make sure that we're telling, telling our constituents that we are gonna spend a lot of time working with them on reading and school readiness.
Does that, does that look much different for other surveys that you do, or is typically reading and school readiness the first couple?
You know, I would say that usually science and, these days, usually science and math are higher. And I don't know that it, you know, I don't think anybody's saying it's not important, but for whatever reason, you know, it's just still a little bit more important on the reading and school readiness.
Were all of those given as an option, or did they just say what would be more, you know, how was the question phrased?
Yeah, so they were given as an option, and we said, "Which of these would be most important to you in choosing a preschool?" They have an open-ended question they got to answer too.
Is that the total of your list that you asked, your questions?
On the curriculum, yes. And the childcare people put that together. So when we did the study with the committee, the childcare specialists, I'll say that work with childcare are the ones that gave me those things to test. So just projections for early childhood, one of the things we didn't get much data on is what they were willing to pay, and I think that the, the most common answer was the market rate. So there's an understanding that, you know, there's some price that you have to pay for childcare, and you'd expect it to be similar to that. Right now, you have 2,414 children that are ages zero to five in that service area. That, the population's gonna grow, the number of children's gonna fall, but you're gonna, so you're gonna end up staying pretty close. By 2021, you'll have 2,240 children in that age group, so. It's not as significant a fall because your population growth makes up for it. 15.8% had a high interest in purchasing childcare programs from you, so you have a potential of 381 new participants in childcare, so there's nothing in the data of the study that shows that you wouldn't have successful, viable, full, with waiting lists, childcare programs for the foreseeable future. My one caveat being just always watching what those ages are, you know? Okay, anything else, questions on childcare?
You mentioned full and a waiting list, I guess what's that number based on? I guess you know that.
Well, right now, you are full with a waiting list, and what is your capacity?
I have a 120 and four-year-old preschool, there's another 32 and three-year-old preschool, and then we're at 93% capacity in childcare, zero to five, just daycare, not actual preschool.
Our capacity with daycare is close to 200, isn't it Mark?
So you probably have as much demand out there as you're currently serving at.
That doesn't count the after-school, that's just the zero to five.
Right. And half of it would be part-time. Okay, let's talk about programs. I fancied up this chart since those of you who saw it last Thursday have seen it, so. So first of all, we give people a list of programs, and it's based on, in some ways, it's based on their demographics or their household makeup. So we don't ask you about childcare if you don't have kids, we don't ask you about senior programs if you don't have a senior in your household. We don't ask you about teen programs if you don't have a teenager, okay? But this is the respondents, the things that people said they would use often, and this is all respondents. And the number one thing is cardiovascular, we know that's what they're doing now, we know we gotta, you know, we're worried about their heart health, so that's number one. It's almost always number one in every study. Everything that's blue up here, it's actually little waves, you can't really tell, but everything that's blue is something to do with the pools. And I singled this out because we have really strong demand for pools, and so we want to make sure that we're, we just keep that in mind, because from an operational standpoint, that's our biggest ticket item, and so we're always thinking about, well, we know what people want, but what can we afford to give them, right? So we keep that going. I also wanted to say that, you know, that this doesn't mean, well, we'll just do the top five things on, on here, because even the smallest thing at the bottom, pickleball has 4.5% demand, would be a huge pickleball program if you had 4.5% of 11,000 households participating, right? So this is more, this information is used to go into the architectural programming of the facility to decide how big spaces should be. Another thing here you might notice was how many people, if you go down five, said that they would use the outdoor pool at M's and Oftons. Now, we talked a lot about this in our pre-meeting when we looked at the data. You know, I think in some ways, people said they want to keep it, and they want it, and that they would use it often. We don't know if they would use it often, but on the other hand, there's really no reason, if it's something they have now, why would they say not to have it? You know, it's just so, might have been a little bit of a, of setting ourselves up with the question, but definitely we had a lot of people say that they had high interest in it. The interest was all in people that were 50 and below, 50 to 60 were pretty neutral, 60 and above said they'd never use it, so.
What's pickleball?
Pickleball?
You're showing your age, Joe.
I think I need to go to the Y, don't I?
No, I teach you at high school.
Pickleball is like, it's kind of like ping pong and a cross between ping pong and tennis. So you play, and it's like a little log net, and you play it, and, you know, seniors really love it, and so do young people at college campuses, it's a huge thing. My son's at school at DC, and every time I talk to him, he's playing pickleball, so.
He uses wiffle ball.
Yeah, he uses wiffle ball. All right, we gotta sign this guy up, get him a, get him a lesson. It's a lot of fun, yeah. Then I did a separate ranking of just households that had children, and we find here that the warm water pool is the number one thing with households with children. Now, this is where the original study that you did and the new study were different. And then most of the things, it's a little hard to compare apples to oranges and some of those, but the, the original study showed the cold water pool higher than the warm water pool. And this one shows the warm water pool higher. I would, I suspect we got a lot more random sample, we've got, you know, we didn't have, you know, and I do it too, it's, I love to take surveys and I'll send it to my friends and say, "Here, you take this, you know, we're trying to see if we can get a new Captain D's in White House." That's what we just got.
People don't know about the cold pool unless they've got kids in swimming or they been, you know, they understand the current, why there's a concept of that. People like me, they don't, I would be warm pool.
So the things you would do in cold water, if you're not a swimmer like me, I don't know, I haven't always like tied with anybody for my cold water, but if you are a real lap swimmer, you want cold water because you get supposedly, at some point you get hot and sweat when you're swimming, and I don't, can't believe it, but, so that's what they say, lap swim in cold water, and also swim team, we use cold water, right? There's, you can see they get, you're only gonna do that in hot water. Things like swim lessons, water aerobics, water, any kind of water jogging exercise, those kinds of classes, mommy and me class, all that's done in a warm water pool. When you have one pool, and I was a YMCA director, I know, so you try to find some temperature that causes you the least complaints every day. That becomes their whole job as a Y, because it's a, you just, it's too cold, it's too hot, you know, so you try to get somewhere in the middle where everybody's unhappy, but they're not so unhappy that they're yelling at you. That's, that's the goal. So it makes it really hard to operate. Other thing, another thing that came up very high was an indoor playground. And we, we actually tested indoor playground and activity area, so a place for families to come together and let kids run off some energy. Now that the baby's asleep, I feel like I should miss breakfast. Child watch is babysitting, so while parents are working out, there's a place for their kids to, I don't wanna say just babysitting, because they're doing activities and good curriculum too. And you can see the things here. Another thing that I thought tested higher than I'm used to seeing is family exercise classes. So we actually have family yoga, family, you know, Olympic-type classes, family run around the gym and do obstacle courses, all kinds of things like that that you do as a family. And then we had classes like music, art, and dance that tested too, so. Some fun stuff there. We, we didn't intentionally not ask about an indoor track, but we did not ask about an indoor track, and so when we asked people the open-ended, are there other things you'd like for this facility to have, the indoor track came out number one on that. So again, you know, there's, some of it's your climate, there's some of its expectation of what people think, but I don't think we're talking about a race, racing track, more just walking track. Probably a lot of those mall walkers, mall walkers looking for another option, so. Okay, then we had some other program type things that we wanted to go a little bit deeper on. One of was the babysitting, the child watch that I mentioned, because when we have that, it can be included in a family membership, or it can be, oh, good to see you again. We would have it included or We would have it included, or maybe you pay every time you bring your child in, that kind of thing. So that's what we were at, why we were asking a second question about whether or not they'd want it to be included in a family membership. And we had about 15% say that it should be, 8% said they prefer to pay as they, as they go, and 18% saying they were unsure, so. You know, some of these things, if you haven't had a great program or experience with a program, with a great child watch program, people don't know how to value it because they're like, well, I don't know if my child would want to go in there, would they cry, you know? Maybe I'd be better off just to get, you know, go when they were in school. So some of it, I think, I would see this being a big program for you. Same thing with group fitness classes, did they want them included? And the majority wanted them that knew. Again, people, 57% of the people were unsure. They're like, well, what kind of classes? Well, who's going to be teaching it? Well, what time is it going to be? Things we couldn't answer yet, so they, they were a little unsure of that. These are things you could do later in focus groups. We can go a little deeper with just, you know, once you get going and you're trying to figure out how to price things, you can get a little more data with people who are actually interested in those things. As I said, the outdoor pool is very important to family membership. 89% of those people who said they were likely to join said that they would use it often. And so that's.
Was that joined?
Joined the YMCA, yeah, joined the Y.
But was there new outdoor pool?
Uh, no, with the existing outdoor pool at Edmondson. So we didn't test an outdoor pool in this, at the new facility. Again, you know, I think it is almost, they just don't want to lose something that they, that they have, and.
Something they already got and they can do.
Yeah, so. And I think that there's a lot, from what I heard, there's a lot of conversation about it that's happened in your community. So they probably instantly were afraid that if they didn't say that, that it would be closed. See, I could see kind of answering your question that way. Again, this, this is what the number is, but when you have that kind of noise going on in a survey, it does, you know, it changes the way people answer. It's one reason we, you know, we have to be so careful when we ask any kind of pricing question. Because instantly, if you ask me, you know, do you want to pay $5 or $10 for something? Why would I ever say $10? They'd say, do you want to have this, or do you want to close it? In their case, they don't perceive that it costs them anything to have it. Now, I know it does, because there's obviously, you know, funding going toward that, but they feel like it's not going to cost them anything more, I guess. Another thing that we tested, which is something, you know, we just don't test a lot, is extended hours. And yet, there are a lot of YMCA's that have good programs. So if you have a lot of shift workers, or a lot of college students, or millennials, or just your community of night owls, you got a lot of people that might be interested in using the facilities. Most facilities close around 10:00 PM and open at 4:00 or 5:00 AM. This would say you'd have some hours from 10:00 PM to 4:00 AM. How many people were interested in that? And you had 12 and a half percent of the people interested. And I know we could find some good models for Y's. I know the Fargo Y had, you know, the key to this is to design a facility so you can have part of it open from 10 to 4:00 AM, but you're not having to, you know, guard pools or have the whole thing. But there is definitely interest in it here. We asked people that said they were likely to join, how they, what kind of membership category they would join in. And we had 46% say that they would join as family. So you're going to have a, you know, it's going to be a real family-oriented place. 28% would just be single adults, and 15 and a half percent seniors, 7 and a half percent couples. All right, so if you're still awake, we're talking about price-demand curves. Do you remember from economics? When price goes up, demand goes down. And so we see on this side, these are the prices that we tested. This is the highest price. So these are our highest prices here where we have the lowest demand. Doesn't mean demand is low, just means it's the lowest demand. We try to keep the, the middle prices pretty close to what the Y rates are now, and then we had lowest prices. None of these rates have to be what the Y member, what the rates are. But what this gives us is a good curve here to see, if I wanted my demand to be here, what would my rate need to be? And so it's just a, an economic tool that we, that we can use to look at pricing. Other than being some pretty pictures, that doesn't tell you a whole lot. But these are the numbers that go along with this. And so let me just explain to you that I took the 11,844 households that we had, I subtracted the 740 current members that you have. And I also only looked at, for the purpose of the projections, incomes over $50,000, because we're looking for projections of full-pay membership. Now, that doesn't mean that you won't have subsidy, you have subsidy now, so income-based pricing or membership scholarships. And so you can grab some of the demand of these people that are over here that say, I could only join if it's $25 a month. You still can grab that. But for the purpose of helping you figure out if this is financially feasible, we do our projections on incomes over $50,000. And so we have, and if we just focus maybe here on the middle price, so we don't get too much number over there, these are the categories that they would come out, come out to be. We have 1,025 new members plus our 740 existing members. We have no reason to believe that they wouldn't stay with us, the majority of them. And so that would give us a total of 1,765 member units for a new facility. Now, that is a range of 1,765 to 3,000, looking at a total unit, so when you start to look at your scholarships and financial subsidy. Now, I know I'm going to have some questions on this page.
And the middle price is our current rate?
Yes, it's pretty close to it. You have some wonky rates right now, so. Not wonky, but from my standpoint of trying to pick one, you have some different categories, so pretty much average those out. So we take that percentage of people that are highly likely to join, that's the only thing we counted, which is that they were very likely to join at each rate, and we multiplied it times the number of households that we had left, 50,000 above, and subtracting our current members.
You asked that question, but then with what kind of facility?
Yeah, so the way that we asked the question was, if the, if the facility has the programs that matter most to you, you know, the things that you want, how likely would you be to join at this rate? And we ask you the highest rate first. Now, let me just say, before you Google out my numbers, that, you know, I do this all over the country, and I have to go back, and my numbers have to work, or I don't get hired again. And so the committee looked at my results of this, and it's really not crystal ball as much as it looks like it really is statistics. And you found in my references and in my stuff that people, Y's hit their numbers. They have to, or they'll go out of business. A lot of Y's, a lot of these places are borrowing money or using donated funds, but.
Maybe explain how you asked that question.
Yeah, so what we do is we say, we start with the highest rate first. And so if I'm calling, you know, Michael, and you're not married right now, and I say, you're going to join as an individual, and how likely would you be to pay $45 a month for a YMCA membership? And you say, very likely. I say, thank you, and I go on to the next question. If you say anything other than very likely, I say, well, what about $40 a month? And we go on, and we go on, and we go on, and we go on down.
Yeah, but what, what was in the facility that you're asking that question of?
Yes, so we asked them, so we, we asked them if they had, if it has the things that you want. So these are the things it's going to have as planned. If it has the things that you want, how likely are you going to be to join? And this is one thing I say to the committee, if you don't build what we tested, the numbers don't hold up, right? So if any, and I have this happen with projects a lot, they'll call and say, we didn't get our funding for our outdoor pool. So can you tell me how that's going to impact my numbers? So I go back, and everybody who had an outdoor pool is, is very likely to join, and an outdoor pool is, you know, very often they were going to use it. We acted, they were in use of the man. You're right, I mean, it's, it's very much based on the facility we tested. We painted a picture for them of what this is going to be. And if the picture doesn't match what it is, the numbers won't hold. Okay? Any other questions?
Well, I mean, if you look at what they wanted, so many of that is an empty room. It's a programming that we put into the space. It's not, it's not that we have to build space specifically for activity. So a lot of it comes down to making sure that we program what they want.
Yeah. The pools are the biggest things. Usually, things that drop out will be things like racquetball, you know, a Y will say, we tested it, but we're not going to have it. What will that do to demand? And as you can imagine, it won't change drastically, but it would, we would, we would reduce it if, if you drop out any of these things. That's one reason we give you a range of numbers.
Can you tell how many respondents indicated the track?
I can, but not out of my head.
Okay. That'd be helpful, I'd like to know.
But it was significant.
Okay.
You need an indoor walking something, you know, so that's have to be, I think maybe in your original plan, you had an elevated track, right? It doesn't have to be elevated, it doesn't have to be around the gym, it doesn't, and we didn't find anything like that, but you need somewhere for people to walk indoors. And I know Des Moines has some that are actually on the exercise floor.
They're outside?
They're outside?
Fresh air. Just right around the outdoor. There you go.
These were, this is just a summary of what we've already talked about. But I did want to just talk to you about some next steps, about what usually happens in a, in a program after you do market research. So we're thinking about a flow chart, we do market research. About 25% of the time, I say, you really can't build this unless you have endowment. You know, there's not a, there's not a business case, you're not able to keep this going, to sustain this unless you have donors donating to your operation, not just to your, to your capital. So the 75% then that go on to the next stage, we then take this data and re, and develop, or in your case, redevelop the schematic design. So you develop something in the beginning, but you did it just kind of based on, you know, what you thought, right? And what your initial survey said. So now you would use, and I think you'll probably be using a company called Row Development that YUSA recommends, they take my data and they do an architectural program based on that. So they'll say, you know, you need 8,000 square feet of fitness, and you need 6,000 square feet of child watch. They put it into little blocks, then, then you have local architect that does, does the actual architectural work. After you have an architectural program, you're ready to do a performa, because a lot of your expenses are based on your facility costs. So what I'm giving you here is a good idea about your revenue. The expenses are either tied to your facility or tied to delivering that program that develops that revenue. And so you build those, that performa, usually on scenarios. You build it, you say, we have two pools, we're going to have this much revenue and this much expense. We have one pool, and they have this much revenue and this much expense. And so most of the time, I'm usually doing two or three scenarios, performa, just to see. Because you can get to the point too where you could say, we might have a donor, and this is one of the most difficult things that used to happen to me when I was vice personal operations, we have a donor saying, I will build X for you, but we have no market for it, and the expenses it's going to cost us to run X is, it's not a good idea, even though we're like, well, why not? They're going to pay for it, you know, but just because we have to operate these things. Really, perpetually is how we have to plan to do it. And then just the last thing, really, just start preparing your communications and your marketing prior to groundbreaking. It's an exciting thing for a community to have something new, but as you know, it can get, there can be a lot of rumor mill, and, oh, did you know it's going to have, you know, this in it? And then it doesn't have this in it, so you have an expectation, so just some good stuff there. That's what I saw as next, the immediate next steps of getting started. Your questions, concerns, doubts? I can help you sleep better at night, or.
What is the, the current stuff that people are putting into indoor playgrounds?
Well, there are some really cool exercise physiologist-type people that are designing things that get kids moving in certain ways on playground equipment. So we've got, everybody's thinking about safety, you know, so we've got to cover it in 10-inch foam or whatever. But really thinking about the muscle groups that kids need to move. So there's some great equipment out there, and that's something to grow. I know we have a lot of examples, but it's all about getting kids to move and actually have to use their strength and be safe. I think what happened, and I was listening to something at a facility conference, we went so far safe for a few years, that basically kids just sat and turned ABC. We wanted them to do that, right? Do the ABCs or play tic-tacs, because it was safe from a liability standpoint. But then what did the kids do? They climbed up on top of it and jumped off, right? Found ways to punch their fists through the ABCs and stuff like that, so I think there's some really cool ideas. And one thing that I've seen, several Y's now have the tricycle tracks, and so around the playground, you can bring your Big Wheel or, you know, have some there, and the kids ride their tricycles around and have little obstacle course things they can go over and fun stuff like that.
Sponsor those unreliable playgrounds.
Yes.
Just to, Dave, kind of answer your question a little bit, you can try and develop a playground for everybody, or you can take some ideas from other YMCA's. Syracuse, New York YMCA built a new East Suburban Grand, and they have what they refer to as club rooms. And these club rooms are for different ages. So they make sure that what's in that room is something that's going to excite that age group. So there's two ways to look at it, at least two.
So it sounds like we might want to target our demographic a little bit, that if, if we know we have a certain population age that is showing up with a high demand in our families, then we're going to be able to say, okay, here's the style of playground they appear to be demanding.
Another thing that is popping up at a lot of Y's, and for one reason, it's not expensive to build or to operate, is a spray ground. So, you know, an outdoor playground that has water elements, and you don't have to have a lifeguard, you know, it really is a playground that has a lot of, you know, water fun things, and we know kids love to splash in the water and shoot the water cannons and things like that, so. Yeah, but we know that our biggest group that we need to attract is going to be families. And then within families, we know a lot about the ages of those kids, so. Yes?
I had a question on projections for early childhood programs under, under line three. It says 15.8% at four, 15.8% or 381 new participants. That's new participants on top of what we already have. So whatever the enrollment is now, we add 381 to that?
We have, we have the ability to get 381. 41% of those would be part-time, and about 41% would be full-time, so. Now, you probably wouldn't be able to build anything that big, you know? That would be a huge child development center. So that was why my, my forecast there was really just, you can be full. As long as you don't build anything bigger than capacity of 800, you're going to be full of a waiting list, but you, I doubt you build anything that big, but you've got room for more spaces. Anything else?
So I guess for the benefit of the group, you mentioned in the next steps, working through the process of refining, working with GROW, working with the Y, and then eventually working on the performa. And that is in fact what we are doing. And so that process that was outlined, the worries, is what we're working on now. I would expect within the next quarter, I think that's fair. I would expect within the next quarter, I think that's fair, fair mark, uh, margin of error here, the next quarter, we'll get through, uh, most of those items, and so we'll have a better picture, uh, this quarter, yeah, in a few months. We'll be able to have a conversation with the city council about the cost of the building, cost of operating the building, and the same would be true for the school board itself, and I think those are, Russ had a conversation with the school board about having better information before we proceed, and I think there are gonna be interesting and difficult and fun conversations about how the partnership moves forward, but I don't think we need to have those or should have those until we have better information. And we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to the tax burden before that happens, and that way we avoid major frustration. So, I think that's, that's what I always wanna outline, that we are proceeding, unless partners feel differently.
And you always get new information, right? You know, this is, that's, when you see, when I go back and, at the moment, Y's open, I go back and test my numbers, I test them again, um, in three years, but, but I've almost always had several conversations with them before, I very seldom hand you this and then come back for your groundbreaking, because lots of new information will come in between now and then, new providers might come in, new donors may come in that wanna build something we didn't test, uh, you're gonna have to drop something out that we tested high, whatever it is, so, just get ready for, you know, it is a process, so. Yes?
Yeah, Lori, so, I guess from the YMCA of the USA's perspective, I, what I love about this is that this is right in line, I think, in what we're experiencing, is we work with YMCA's, not just in Iowa, but across the country, and so I think, in particular with your next steps, I can, um, echo what Michael said, I mean, the YMCA's fair share support takes care of 1 through 4. I mean, the dues that this YMCA's paying get them services to help complete 1 through 4. Um, so, I, I feel like what you've done really informs the process from the YMCA of the USA's perspective, and it really enables us then to begin to do that architectural programming. And I think the other really exciting piece is when you look at families being your target market, um, I think there's, I, we've got a lot of great examples, like I think of the Bedendorf YMCA, um, they recently renovated, and so, um, I think to be able to feed the committee some field trips to take, um, that are right in line with what you, you've recommended, so, really appreciate everything that you've said, and appreciate the ties that you've made without, you know, without us talking.
Well, and I, you know, that's my bad friend is YMCA, so, um, I, I could get a little overzealous sometimes when we're, when we're doing it, and nothing is sadder to me than when I have to say, "I just don't see how this would work," but the only thing sadder than that would be me seeing them struggle, uh, when they get it there and they can't afford it, so, you don't have any, um, anything there that I see as a red flag at all, uh, as far as member, uh, as far as community demand, so. Okay, well, I mean, Michael, the group knows where to get in touch with me if you have a question, and, uh, again, thank you for having me. I was here twice in a week, and the weather was beautiful, and everything was great, so. I even had a taco. See, today's National Taco, so, I had a taco at Taco Time, so, I'm all ready to go, so.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you very much. Thank you.